All right. Are we ready to get started? Think we're ready to go?
I think so.
All right, well, welcome everyone. Welcome to the American College of Veterinary Pharmacists Town Hall. We felt it was time to do one of these because we have so much news to share. We have exciting news to share. Gigi Brenda and I are just getting back and getting into the swing of things from APHA's annual conference. So we'll share a lot of news from that with you, but we'll go ahead and get started. So I'm Natalie Young, I'm the chairman of ACVP. And ma'am, not many people know who you are. Do you mind introducing yourself?
Sure, I'm Gigi Davidson. I am the ACVP delegate to APHA and I do some other stuff for ACVP as well.
All right, we'll go ahead and advance this slide if you don't mind for me, Terry. All right, so membership status getting started. So we are over 600 members strong. Oh my goodness, look how many student pharmacists we have. I can tell you, having spent the past four years on this board, our students are incredible and they are so involved. Right now, we're about to choose our next board member, our student board member. So that'll be an exciting time and so we want to just keep seeing this number grow. We want to see the technician membership grow. We have some powerhouses that are currently active members and we want more for sure. And always new practitioners, pharmacists, pharmacy fellows. Keep them coming, so this is exciting to see. We do have two new fellows that we are proud to announce. So I'm going to butcher your last name Wayne, I am so sorry, but Wayne Sartori Torio. I'm really excited about you, even though I can't pronounce your last name. So you are a wonderful addition to our membership. And Jim Booty. So, and I finally nailed your last name after Gigi's told me a million times how to properly pronounce it. But Jim, oh my gosh, I had the honor of being the one to interview you for your fellowship status and just adore you. So excited to have you as a fellow. We do have a little bit of news for everyone. If you're encouraging people to join ACVP, please continue to encourage them to join. But just know that we are currently putting any applications for ACVP fellowship on hold at this time. What our board has decided is that we really need to look and modernize our procedure for becoming a fellow of ACVP. We want to, we want to more closely align with veterinary pharmacy practice today and veterinary practice. So please continue to tell people to join and they can apply for fellowship status. We're just going to hold that application for the time being as the board works through some of the details of this. So stay tuned on that. As of June 2022, we have a new mission statement. So the mission of the American College of Veterinary Pharmacists is to promote education. Ding ding ding, this is going to come up in just a little bit. And leadership of pharmacy professionals and veterinary pharmacotherapy to enhance non-human patient care. And we have taken this mission this past year and ran with it. So you'll hear that in just a minute. Here are our current ACVP Board of Directors. This will change in June, but this is who your current leadership is. So right now, ACVP Board nominations and elections are going on. We will, the nomination period ends tomorrow. So get your nominations in. Anybody that you think of, go ahead and submit them. I have done more than one submission telling on myself, so get yours in as well. Here's a QR code for you that Terry has graciously included on our slides. You can self nominate. And then as far as these dates for April 7th, April 17th. Gigi, do you know, those are a little off from what I knew about?
That's, it is a little bit off. The voting closes tomorrow at midnight. And so what these important dates are is when the voting will actually happen. So nominations through tomorrow at midnight and then actual voting process happens until midnight, April 17th. And the board will take a look at those votes and new officers will be installed at our BPC in Denver.
Thank you, yes, yeah. This is what, this is what happens when you're the last to know everything, right? Is the chair? Okay, positions that are available, yes, thank you, Terry. It is for Vice President. So when you become Vice President, you commit to the board for four years. It flies by, let me tell you, but it's a very rewarding experience. And then Member at Large, and Member at Large, you will serve for two years. All right, next slide. We, we had tried these out over the past couple of years. The journal clubs and the roundtable discussions. They were well received, but we've kind of pulled back the topic discussions, roundtables. We've decided to discontinue those, but journal clubs, we're going to keep going with. We're going to start those back up. They're going to be uneven numbered months, free of charge, open to everyone. Now, that's a little bit of a change. What, what our, what our journal clubs will be focused on is more on what you would see in the community setting. And we've made sure we've scheduled these to avoid conflict with the SVHP journal clubs and resident seminars. I have been paying attention to the SVHP journal clubs, attending those when I could and going back and listening to the recordings. If I couldn't be there, they're fantastic. We encourage you to join our friends for those as well and then come to ours and then you are just going to know it all. And then definitely go to the resident seminars because those look really exciting as well. There's some very, very talented residents participating in those. And they will, like I said, we can't always make everything, right? We have so many meetings, so they'll be recorded and on demand, so you can view those at a later time. The next one is going to be on April 18th at 12:30 Eastern Time. And we've already signed Erica Wasak up, even though this may be news to her, but she's doing it. So we've signed her up. We will, so we're not doing the roundtable discussion topics, discussions that I mentioned, but we are going to do the town halls like this one today. They're free of charge, they're open to all in the pharmacy and the veterinary community, even open to veterinarians. And they will be recorded so that you can listen to them at a later time. The next one, so exciting, Brenda Jensen's going to talk about GFI 256. Please, if you're here, make sure you know about GFI 256 because it's coming on Saturday. It's here. And it's also really important to educate yourself about it because I promise you, if you are assisting veterinarians, they probably don't know about it or now they've heard about it and they're starting to freak out and they need your help like understanding it. There's a lot to unpack, unpack with GFI 256. So please be here in May to listen to Brenda chat about that. All right, so our ACVP campus chapters, they continue to just be really active and they are, that I think this is probably one of the biggest reasons that our student pharmacist group is just so active and powerful. So we've got them all throughout the country and we keep inviting more and more. So you can see there the new campus chapters that we've welcomed recently. So ACVP Student Pharmacist Opportunities, so they continue to have meet and greets. I would encourage any of the pharmacist on this call to please show up for those. They love meeting you and picking your brain because you may not realize, and maybe you do, but we've been, some of this have been this for so long, we take it for granted how cool our job is. So they love hearing about it. So I'm showing up to just chat with them about that, give them some advice, calm their nerves for graduation and all of that. Or residency interviews is great to be there for them. As I mentioned, applications are due on Saturday for the Student Pharmacist Board Member position. I did see that we've got a past student board member Savannah that I think she's here today. So she, she and Emily have been our student board members since we opened this position and they have just been so helpful to the board and letting us stay connected to what the students are doing. And it's really, really great to have their input, right? They just, they let us know something that, they keep us cool, we'll put it that way. So we love having them. And then the Adopt a Student Program, if you were at our conference in Raleigh, a big shout out to Connor. He did a fantastic job running with this program. It seemed to go really well, everyone loved their students. I adored mine, if she's here today, send me, send me a little note to let me know how you're doing. But I think everybody enjoyed having a student to chat with during the conference. And I know the students enjoyed that too, so we're continuing with that as well. We will keep putting out public service announcements. You may see an uptick in these as we focus on putting out some really good content to keep everybody updated. Of course, FDA new drug approvals will come out, regulatory updates, any hot topics. Xylazine is one that was actually in the New York Times recently and it's been all over the news this week, even just yesterday. So we'll continue to send out information about those items that you need to be aware of and pay attention to social media. If you're someone that does social media, definitely pay attention to the posts that, that everyone keeps, keeps up with. The students actually, if you don't follow the student groups, make sure you follow them as well because they seem to be pretty active with their social media post. CE opportunities, those will keep coming as well. We were just chatting this morning before this call about the June conference. We're going to mention that several times. We have a great lineup of speakers, so make sure you join us in Denver, Colorado for that. So that CE opportunity is coming up and we're going to continue to do quarterly free CE for ACVP fellows. And what we're doing is we're pulling some of the great talks from the past conferences. Dr. Craig Clifford is one of the current ones, that is the current one that's offered. If you don't know who Dr. Clifford is, he is so, so brilliant when it comes to veterinary oncology. He speaks for everyone all over the country. So that's a really great one to listen to. If you were at one of our recent conferences, you know, just it was a powerhouse lineup. So we'll, we'll keep offering those so you can get your CE in. And we've got about 26 topics that are currently on demand that you can go take a look at. And one of the cool things that our board has decided to do is to seek out race accreditation for veterinarians. Because as many of you know, like veterinary pharmacology is growing in popularity, is growing in interest. Veterinarians are seeing the real benefit of having a relationship with a veterinary pharmacist. And they're also seeing the real benefit of having that core pharmacology knowledge. As you know, more drugs come out and it becomes more complex to treat our patients. So we're inviting them to come in and learn some more, maybe get some advanced pharmacology that they didn't get in college in their graduate training. All right, like I said, we are, we are like, we're recovering. We just got off the planes from Phoenix. And so we were just telling the world about veterinary pharmacy. So we had three speakers at APHA Annual. APHA is just now every year putting veterinary pharmacy and compounding, and compounding standards and rules and regs on, on rotate at the annual conference, which is really exciting. So Gigi presented on interpreting USP compounding preparation monographs. Very, very much needed CE. And Brenda talked about the new USP updates. Those are coming November 1st, so you need to get through April 1st with GFI and then you got to get ready for November 1st, right? These actually are available to purchase for CE access, I believe on APHA's website. You have to, if you're not an APHA member, I don't know how that's going to work. But they may have them available to the public as well. So you just need to go to the APHA website and see if you can access those. And, and mine, you guys are probably too advanced for this. Like this was like bringing all of our fellow pharmacists, all our colleagues, just giving them a little taste of, of what we do. So I did a very basic introduction to veterinary pharmacology for everyone.
So thank you Natalie for bringing us up to this point. As Natalie mentioned, we, ACVP has updated their mission statement to modernize its reflection on veterinary, contemporary veterinary pharmacy practice. There's less of a focus on business and certainly less of a focus on compounding. ACVP had sort of, unrightfully in my opinion, earned the reputation as being a group of compounding pharmacists. While compounding pharmacy is incredibly important to veterinary medicine and helping veterinary patients achieve positive therapeutic outcomes. It is not who ACVP solely is. A veterinary pharmacist can still be a veterinary pharmacist whether they compound anything or not. So our new mission is to educate pharmacists and pharmacy technicians and student pharmacists into how to properly care for non-human patients. And we'll talk a little bit about what we've been doing at APHA to, to help accomplish that. So we, for the first time, ACVP exhibited at APHA. There were more than, I think, 300 exhibitors in the exhibit hall. And we got probably between 100 and 150 visitors per hour while we were there. So we distribute a lot of information about ACVP. We have these handy dandy little sugar-free gum packets. Xylitol and dogs not meant to be, that carries the poison control hotline number on the back and sent the message about, everybody should know that xylitol is, can be quite toxic to dogs. We also had a database and several QR codes that you could scan to go into free information that would bring you up to speed. This is a list of 20 of the approved veterinary products that all pharmacists, pharmacy technicians and student pharmacists should know about when they are taking care of non-human patients. Because these will not necessarily appear on their profile because they've come from the veterinarian. But pharmacists and technicians and students need to know about this for drug interactions. But also if their owners, their pet parents inadvertently ingest these, the emergency department's probably not going to have a clue what these drugs are. So any veterinary pharmacist can certainly help in those situations. Next slide, Terry. So Natalie and I and Brenda Jensen are, and Randy Carr is an alternate, are the ACVP delegates to the APHA House of Delegates. And we have had some interesting initiatives in the last two years. Natalie is also a delegate for the Academy of Pharmacy Practice Management. And so she pinch hits when one of us cannot be at a final vote. And that's indeed what happened on March 28th. Natalie pinch hit it to get this vote accomplished that we'll talk about in just a minute. In March of 2021, ACVP House of Delegates, we, or delegates proposed that the definition of patient at APHA was kind of obsolete. It just was humans. And so we proposed that APHA expand that definition to include non-humans. And it was unanimously accepted by the House of Delegates. That was in 2021. The oath of a pharmacist was also revised in 2021. And in that, there are several statements about pharmacy graduates using their knowledge to provide the best outcomes for all patients. Well, now all patients is all species. So we felt like it's very, very, very important to get veterinary pharmacy education available to any pharmacy graduate, any pharmacy technician training program graduate. In February of this year, we were very, very, very proud to see APHA finally, finally, many of us have been doing this 40 years or more, APHA finally added veterinary pharmacy to the practice setting dropdown for APHA members. I don't know how many of our, members of our audience are also APHA members, but now you can go in and your profile setting and you can change your practice setting to veterinary pharmacy. It's so great to have that recognition after all these years because we've always been other. And other allow some possibilities, but it was not what we wanted. We wanted veterinary pharmacy to be its own practice setting. So on, I guess, early February, we submitted a new business item, which was numbered number one, to encourage veterinary pharmacy training in schools of pharmacy and pharmacy technician training programs. Excuse me, and that was unanimously accepted by the House of Delegates. Next slide, Terry. And this is what the new policy in APHA will say. Number one is about getting pregraduate education in pharmacy schools and pharmacy technician training programs. APHA encourages schools and colleges of pharmacy and pharmacy technician training programs to facilitate educational opportunities for student pharmacists and student technicians in the principles of veterinary technology. The second one is about post, postgraduate education. APHA encourages the availability of professional development opportunities in the principles of veterinary pharmacotherapy for pharmacists, student pharmacists and pharmacy technicians. So you may remember that NABP had a resolution several years back encouraging veterinary drug information resources in pharmacy practice. And AVMA had a resolution shortly after that encouraging schools and colleges of pharmacy to educate pharmacists in veterinary pharmacotherapy. So now APHA has jumped on that bandwagon and we finally have true collaboration between AVMA and APHA and all of our professional veterinary pharmacy and pharmacy organizations to try to get pharmacists up to speed. Emily Sora, who I believe is on this call, did a survey of all pharmacists about, it was in 2014, I believe. And her results indicated that at least 77% of the pharmacists responding to her questions had filled a veterinary prescription. And in, in last spring, I believe it was, Carolyn Arnish did a survey and she found that only 21% of colleges of pharmacy even offered any veterinary pharmacy training. So those, those two numbers are scarily similar. 77%, three quarters of pharmacists are filling prescription for animals and three quarters of schools do not offer any training. So that's why we feel like this is going to be a really, really significant kind of catalyst to get veterinary pharmacy education going in schools of pharmacy and pharmacy technician training programs. Next slide. So as I mentioned, what this will do is any pharmacy student who wants training and any pharmacy technician who wants training in veterinary pharmacy, those faculties now have kind of the backing of APHA to approach their administrators and try to offer these trainings for these students who do want it. It also, the, the motion, the policy change also emphasizes the importance of postgraduate training activities. And that's where ACVP and SVHP both can come in and offer many postgraduate training activities, CE's. I know that ICVP, the International College of Veterinary Pharmacists, has recently started offering such online trainings for, for pharmacists. So you can see this is really starting to take off and really beginning to explode. We're going to get our colleagues educated in the field of veterinary pharmacy practice. It also, this is way, 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 way down the road, but it also opens the door to pursuit of veterinary pharmacy specialty certification with BPS. One of the biggest reasons that BPS has not been willing to consider this up to date is because this is not something that was offered in pharmacy schools. And so now it will be offered hopefully in more and more and more pharmacy schools. And so we can start conversations with BPS. Natalie and I had conversations with BPS while we were at APHA and we're beginning the process to start petitioning BPS to consider veterinary pharmacy as a certifiable specialty. Next slide. The veterinary conference, pharmacy conference, we've mentioned that several times. It is going to be held just before SVHP's conference in Colorado. It is June 1st through the 3rd. There is a QR code here if you want to go out and visit that agenda and registration, the hotel accommodations. Next slide. There's early bird pricing through April 15th. So if you're going to consider registering at a discounted rate, please do, do so in the next couple of weeks. It is also ACVP's 25th anniversary, so we're going to have some special, maybe some celebrations, certainly some welcoming activities that celebrate this milestone event. There will be 12 hours of accredited CE for pharmacists. The presentations that are going to be by veterinarians, we're going to pursue race accreditation for those. That's in process. We may get race accreditation for some of the others like GFI 256. As Natalie mentioned, I think many veterinarians would benefit by going through a CE on that. If they are not at this meeting, then it would be available for them to have on demand later. And again, as everyone has mentioned, there are special discounted rates for pharmacy technicians, pharmacy residents and student pharmacists and members of ACVP. So here is the first day agenda. I'm not going to read through all these in the interest of time, but you can see we have quite a variety and diversity of topics and speakers, veterinarians, pharmacists. We have, we can go to the, the next slide. We have a microbiologist who's going to talk to us about cleaning, disinfecting and just how microorganisms impact practice and disease and zoonoses and all sorts of things in, in medical practice. And so it should be a really diverse and really interesting series of talks. The last bullet there, ACVP Educational Committee is developing some guides to help people that are wanting to offer veterinary pharmacy rotations, either in a community practice or a veterinary hospital practice and, or just a veterinary clinical practice. And we're coming up with some baselines to suggest that preceptors achieve with these students. So when they spend some time at an IP or an API rotation, the, the students get as much as they can of what they need to pursue competency in this field. So if you do go to Denver or if you go to Fort Collins for the SVHP meeting, there are a lot of fun things to do in Denver. These are just a few of the ones we, we picked out. They're all animal related expeditions. And you can see the entire spectrum of animals is represented here. There's a wild animal sanctuary where they take wild animals, that wildlife that are not releasable and they rehab them if they can release. If they can release them, they do. If not, they use them there for, for teaching purposes and to educate folks. Broken Shovels is a farm animal sanctuary where animals that, like battery hens and all sorts of animals can be surrendered to, be taken care of and they're, they're forever farm. The Butterfly Pavilion is kind of self-explanatory. Sunflower Farm for people that have kids, it's going to be a really great place to see animals in nature and it's, it's very kid-oriented. It's a fun outside beautiful place to be. The Cat Company, Denver Cat Company is actually big cats. And so, that would be a really fun outing for, for folks who really like big cats, tigers, lions, et cetera. There's a Reptile Rescue and Education Center, the Colorado Gators. Colorado Wolf and Wildlife Center is dedicated only to wolves. They have a couple of species of wolves there, I believe. And then for a really nice outdoor event where you can drive and see lots and lots and lots of wildlife. The Rocky Mountain Arsenal is a several hundred acre facility, it might even be thousands of acres, where you can drive through and see animals in their, in their native setting, in the natural setting. So, the last bit of information we have for you is we're already planning VPC 2024. Linda sent out a survey to you a couple of days ago. We really want to know where and when you would like to go to the 2024 ACVP Veterinary Pharmacy Conference. Your opinion really, really matters and there are a lot of in-depth, not, not so much in-depth, but thoughtful questions that will help us narrow down a site and a date that won't bump up against other meetings and will accommodate your needs to get more CE on veterinary pharmacy practice. To make sure you look for that survey in your mailbox. If you're not a member, then you might want to scan this QR code so you could give us this information if you would anticipate coming. And that is it. We have a pretty good amount of time left here. So, if anybody has any, any questions, either Natalie or I or Terry Bondurant and Linda Cathy from ACVP will be happy to try to answer them. And Terry and Linda, if you guys would run the chat room, that would be great. Or the, unmute the mic so people can raise hands and ask questions.
And I want to add really quick, I saw that Rodney from Plums is here. He hung out with us at APHA. So, hi Rodney, thank you for hanging out with us. You were great. And I mean, he was just, everybody in this exhibit hall wanted to talk to him. So, thank you so much for supporting ACVP. And as we're talking about Denver, want to definitely mention to everyone because a lot of us support ACVP and SVHP. So, SVHP's conference will be right after ours also in Colorado. So, it's going to be down the road in Fort Collins. So, if there's enough interest, I guess I'll drive a bus from Denver to Fort Collins. We'll just all like get on a bus together and we'll all hang out in Colorado for a week. But I, you know, looking at, at their speaker lineup, it's a powerhouse as well. So, you can just like, you can get all of your CE for the like foreseeable future this summer. So, we encourage you to, to look at that conference as well.
Thanks Natalie. So, if anybody has any questions, feel free to unmute yourself or you can put your question in the chat or you can maybe even raise your hand.
I have a quick question, Gigi.
Hi Kathleen.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
I am sending my other pharmacist to Colorado for the meeting. And I'm just wondering if there's not, I mean, I know you guys want to get as many people as you can there, but both of us can't go. And I'm just wondering if there is a way that the fellows can sign up for a Zoom conference at the same time? Because I don't, you know, I'd like it, I'd like to participate while it's happening, even if only by Zoom. So, I'm just wondering if maybe like towards the end of registration, live registration, if there might not, if not this time, maybe in the future, to be able to set up some Zoom meetings for employees to get left behind?
Yeah, we are working on that. And I'm going to defer to Linda and Terry on the logistics of that. That's a great idea. It's something that we've discussed a lot at a board level.
Yeah, and I mean, you guys would still make money, maybe not as much, but it's still, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to keep people from going because it's going to be on Zoom. But I, I would have loved to have gone as well, but I can't close my store for four days.
Oh yeah, we totally get that. Tanner Trantham and I, Tanner's on this call, we, we're like always drawing straws and I always cheat and win. So, we always have that situation too. Luckily, this year we can both go, but I hear you. It's, you know, not everybody can go. So, Terry, I don't know if you want to.
Just a thought, that's all, that's all I was.
It's a great thought that we're constantly thinking about, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
It is something that, a lot of it is, is we would need to have a certain number of participants to make it cost-effective to do live streaming like that. And to not charge it, not have.
So, is it a? Linda, I can call you separately, but i- is it a possibility then that you guys could drop them as webinars before the end of the year? Because I know a lot of times they don't go, they don't get dropped as CE's until the following year, until like 24. Like I've already gotten all my live hours, but I need my veterinary pharmacy hours.
We're trying to work with our speakers to make CE's available with a faster turnaround after the conference. I do want to note that some of the, not all of the speakers agree to be recorded at every conference. So, sometimes there are ones that will not be available because of the speakers restrictions.
Okay, it was just a thought and a.
No, it's a good thought, we appreciate it.
Okay, so Kathleen, next year, select, when you go out and answer that survey about 2024, pick Boston or pick Situate and we'll be there.
Store. All right.
I also wanted to mention, so we've been talking a lot about APHA, but I see some of my friends here from APC as well. And they have definitely been supporting veterinary pharmacy as well. Scott has been twisting my arm to discuss some veterinary trends and, and help bring some of, some other members of APC up to speed about what we, what we're up to in veterinary pharmacy. So, thanks you guys for being here today. I wanted to give you a shout out as well.
Hi Scott.
And Savannah's here as well. Anyone else, any questions about GFI? Everybody ready?
Okay, Teresa, I have a good question here. What types of veterinary pharmacy education are y'all wanting the colleges of pharmacy to provide? I might have missed that part of the presentation. At UNT College of Pharmacy, we do offer advanced compounding elective, which is half the semester is dedicated to veterinary. That's, that's, Teresa, but I, I'll let Natalie comment too. But I think what we're trying to do is incorporate all kinds of opportunities. A veterinary pharmacy elective that does more than just compounding would be great. But even comparative lectures where a veterinary practitioner, be it a veterinarian, a veterinary pharmacologist or a veterinary pharmacist can come in and talk about mitral valve disease in dogs when the students are having their cardiology lectures, that sort of thing. And then opening up the doors for ippies and appies for students who want to go to a veterinary-focused rotation. Because I've been precepting students since 1988 and many, many, many times their schools would not even consider allowing them to do a rotation for credit. They could do an elective if they wanted, but they wouldn't get credit for it or vacation, excuse me. They could do vacation with us. So, we're really, really trying to get faculties at these training institutions to open their minds to, to allowing these opportunities. And I'm sure Natalie has, has something even better to add.
Well, so there are a couple of things there. Yeah, thank you so much for incorporating it into the curriculum and the compounding curriculum. We've been doing the same at UNC Chapel Hill. Emily Sora teaches an elective there and I've been working with Dr. Robert Shrewsbury to incorporate it into the compounding curriculum, anything like that. But the biggest point to make coming out of the house is Delegate Amy Kennedy from, one of, from, so I sit in two, in two seats, I guess, sometimes, but APPM Caucus, which I'm a part of, she stood up and she said, "We are all in support of this. We don't know how to teach this." So, they are looking at us. They want us to create the educational opportunities and they want to facilitate it out to the students. So, that's a huge takeaway. So, I think anything and everything we can do to expose students to this. And it's not saying that, you know, we know not everybody can become a veterinary pharmacist, but just the House and APHA recognize the huge need of just exposure for students to, to think outside of the box, right? Especially like in core concepts about like pharmacodynamics and pharmacokinetics, getting them to think through like how drugs might be metabolized in different species. Excellent for them. So, we are open to ideas and we support you 100% in, in whatever educational opportunities you want to offer or keep going with. Because I know many on this call currently offer a lot, a lot to students.
And I, I see Rob Hunter put a comment in the, the chat room that he's an adjunct professor at UMKC and offers a veterinary pharmacy elective. So, that would be great, Rob. We'd love to have your help in this, in this effort.
Awesome. And yes, Teresa, we see your comment as well. And so, we, please keep giving your ideas to the rest of this, to the, the board and the rest of our membership. It might be, I can say this because I'm coming off the board so I can create as many committees as I want and then walk out the door. But maybe we need a committee for this that you guys should serve on and, and keep coming up with more ideas of what we can do.
And Meg, I, I see your message. That's really important to emphasize that ACVP is about more than compounding. It is about veterinary pharmacy education and improving outcomes. As I said in the outset, some of us may never compound anything, but we are still dedicated veterinary pharmacists that will use approved products to, to provide good outcomes because we know what we're doing with them. And so, it's, it's important that, that we emphasize all aspects, not just the compounding.
Right, our job is to get the medicine in the animal in an effective and safe manner. So, if that's an FDA-approved product, great. If it's a compound, great, you know, like whatever we got to do. And then a big part of what we are becoming that I see more and more is we are becoming clinical consultants to veterinarians, is they're realizing what we can do. I, I don't know about other people, but I know for Tanner and I, we are on the phone all day, it seems like answering drug information questions. So, there's just so much we do beyond compounding. Oh, fantastic Lydia, that's wonderful. And I think that's, you know, we were talking about earlier incorporating veterinarians into this. You know, we've been doing that at our conferences. SVHP has been doing that as well. And that, honestly, I find that fascinating. We need both perspectives, right? Because we can sit here and teach each other all day, but we need veterinarians as well. And Sue, you have a committee at the pharmacy school at Auburn with assistance from veterinarians? Yes ma'am, that's what we were just talking about. Yes, rotations through species with some live animals, that's so helpful. And Sue, you were a part of the equine CE that just occurred and you guys had, I believe, some equine veterinarians speaking too. That was fascinating. So, we'll keep incorporating, doing, you know, collaboration with different professions to educate us all. And we'll even throw a lawyer in the mix. Because I guess every once in a while, we need to follow the rules, right?
And I know some of you may be kind of hesitant to, to speak up, but if you have ideas, we do have a listserv that you could certainly start some chats and discussions on that. Anything that you would like to see ACVP incorporate into its, its, its mission and its activities. You know, we were open to suggestions. We're really trying to, to move ahead as strongly as we can with veterinary pharmacy education in, in all aspects.
All right, well, thank you everyone. Sign up for the fun summer conferences coming. Get your nominations in by tomorrow. I, I see some names on this list now. So, I guess I've got some more to nominate, some people that hadn't, you're on my radar now. And then voting will start soon. And students, put your name in the hat for the board position. So, thank you all for joining us today.
Thanks everyone, good to see some old familiar faces. Take care.
Bye.
Bye.